A quick note on remote participation in response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020. The town or situated public meetings will show meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded live and can on Citroen Community Television's Facebook page. The recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel nine and YouTube Citroen Community Television. The meeting is currently available by Zoom or by dialing in. I don't know that we need to circulate the meeting ID. The login information is available on the zoning board's website.
And Anthony Ed is here. I just let him in.
Oh, wonderful. Hello, Mr. Tibbetts. You were muted. Let me see if I can.
Greetings and salutations. How are you?
Well, very good. Happy New Year.
And to you.
So with that, we're going to call the meeting to order and we are going to start with our first application, which is continued from December 22nd, 2020. Is the application of Brian and Melanie Leggy, care of Walter Sullivan, which has requested a variance to allow for the construction of a 30 by 15 foot swimming pool and an accompanying shed on the south side of the lot closest to Parker Avenue, which is a non-conforming lot at nine Moreland Road in Situate. That application has requested a continuance due to the unavailability of their council.
Move to allow the continuance.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, and I just asked that we go one at a time. I am in favor.
Tibbetts, yes.
Harrison, yes.
Texas, yes.
There we go. The eyes have it. That application is continued until our next meeting, which is our February vacation meeting, which is typically rescheduled. So we will, should we talk about when we would like to do that now?
If the meetings are going to end up being zoomed, I don't have a problem attending the February meeting.
All right. Well, I was looking to have you as my scapegoat as the teacher.
I am the scapegoat, but I will be available.
I have a very, I'm, I'm holding out hope that I'm actually getting out of town. There are a lot of tests and logistics that are involved, but I hope to be unavailable. So.
I think given that the given the circumstances that anyone can get who can get out, given the complications of doing that, they should be taking, taking advantage of it. So I'd opt to move the meeting to the following week if that's appropriate.
That works for me.
Fantastic. Will be, you just, would you guys prefer to stick with Thursdays if we can?
Fine, any day.
That's fine.
So I think we'll tentatively schedule it for Thursday, the 25th of February, of course, pending, I guess we don't need to get a room. So Janine, you'll let us know if there's any issue with that, but I assume we'll get that together.
I will.
And we'll get that up on the site. So the, the more than road application is being continued to February 25th.
Or the, or the next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's what I would agree. Thank you. All right. With that, we are going to move on to our second application, which is brought by Paul Antonik care of Oak Development and Design at 37th Street in Hingham, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, section six and/or sections four, 70.6, eight, 10.2 of the situated zoning by law to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 83 R Glades Road in Situate. With that is the applicant with us, we would ask that they unmute themselves. I think we have to try to unmute themselves. You can raise your hand, Greg. I'm going to try to unmute you. Hang on. There you are. Asked to unmute. Greg, I think you should now be able to unmute yourself. And I think you have achieved that. Hello, Greg.
Good evening. My, my client, the applicant is also on here. I believe he's listed as PJ. He's raising his hand now if he can unmute as well.
I P J, there as well. I'm going to try to unmute PJ. PJ, you should be able to unmute yourself. I'm going to give that another try PJ. My apologies. I mean, there we go. Success. Fantastic. All right, Greg or PJ, why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
Sure. For the record, my name is Gregory Morse. I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering, representing the applicant Paul Antonic PJ, who's with us as well tonight of Oak Development and Design. This is a request for a special permit in accordance with section eight, 10.2 of the bylaw as well as section four, 70.6, being located in the floodplain overlay district. The property we're discussing is 83 R Glades Road. The property itself has an existing home on it that was constructed around 1890 per the assessors cards. It also has a separate detached garage that was built at some point on the property. I don't have a date on that. But it consists of two assessors parcels, parcel five dash three dash 23 and five dash three 24 being 7,690 square feet, being in the R three zoning district. The existing non-compliance is at the site. The house out there is non-compliant with respect to FEMA floodplain requirements. The lot is non-compliant with respect to area being 7,690 where 10,000 square feet is required. The frontage, the lot has zero frontage where 100 feet is required. It is accessed through an easement or right of way between numbers 85 and 87 Glades Road. The front yard setback exists at 12.2 feet. The side yard setback for the structure is 0.6 feet. The rear yard setback is 19.2 in the lot width is 87.9, all of which again are non-conforming. The proposal here is to take down the existing house and replace it with a new one. The existing house is a four-bedroom, one and a half story house. The proposed house would be a four-bedroom house. It would be an elevated house on FEMA compliant pilings, FEMA compliant utilities would be elevated. The new dwelling is approximately 3,472 square feet, where the existing dwelling is 1194 square feet. It represents a 190% increase in the size of the dwelling proposed. We felt that a finding could be made and special permit issued with respect to eight, 10.2, because the new house, how it's being relocated brings into compliance, the side yard setback and the rear yard setback. The front yard setback, which exists at 12.2 feet, is being brought to 14.5 feet. The building height is proposed at 39.8 feet to the ridge of the roof. It's a gambrel style roof, which is in compliance with the zoning requirements, which allow a maximum of 40 feet in height. The other non-conformities with respect to frontage and lot area are not affected, but we are remedied, remedying the side yard setback and the rear yard setback. With respect to section four, 70, the floodplain district, the special permit requirements there, we feel that we are compliant in the fact that we're proposing an entirely new pile-driven foundation that is in full FEMA compliance. I turn it over to you for questions.
Okay, um. I, I do have a question. Talk to me about this retaining wall. I'm sure we're going to hear from the folks at 81. They, they've submitted a letter and I believe their attorney will be, will hear from them tonight. But there's, there were some questions about a retaining wall and some potential encroachments at 81. Can you just elaborate on that?
Sure. We are proposing a retaining wall, which would run along the left side lot line, which if you look at the plan, that's the southern lot line on the plan. The retaining wall itself varies in height. It's approximately two to two and a half feet in height. The main purpose for the retaining wall is because we need to bring in, or we need to bring into compliance, a septic system at the property. The system that's out there right now consists of a cesspool, which has failed a title five inspection. A new septic system is required to be installed above the groundwater table. And so we've done test pits with the board of health out at the site. We've verified the water table. And for the septic system, it results in a mound of approximately two to two and a half feet in height. The site is constrained being 7,000 square feet. And so we were proposing a retaining wall to help hold back that mound that's required for the septic system compliance. How we've positioned the retaining wall, it runs parallel with the direction of water flow out at the site. Typically, water in a flood event would run on this site from east to west. That is, it would come over Glades Road and run across this property, discharging to Bailey's Creek, which is off to the west behind this property. So we've positioned the retaining wall to run parallel with the flow of water, so it wouldn't divert flow onto an abutting property. The second part, I, I did get a copy of Attorney Nagel's letter, had to do with the location of the retaining wall where this, with respect to the stairs and a walkway that the butter has at their, at their front door. That portion of the retaining wall isn't on this site. It's on another site, 83 Glades Road, which my client owns as well. We have since today submitted a revised plan relocating the wall at that 83 Glades Road property to alleviate that concern with respect to access around their front door.
Okay. That's what I have. Susan, and anything else? Any other questions or anything to add?
I don't. I've had a same question about the wall.
All right. Of course. George?
Yeah, Mike, Mike, I had the wall question and that makes more sense now in light of what we've seen. And I, I'm, my, my concern was, was the additional fill for the septic and the impact on the, all the butters, potential flooding issues, right? I mean, this building is going to be up on pylons. That's great. You know, are, do we think we're going to have an impact on anybody else? Right? Because clearly this, this area floods all the time.
Okay. Ed, anything else to add?
No, I think Greg, you might be able to shed some light. The, the property to the west now are formerly Kenny. That's essentially salt marsh, correct?
Correct.
The, the flow of water is Glades Road through the properties at 83 and basically all along Glades Road. It would be, seem to me that just in a general, a general concept, current codes would require all of these structures to be on piling so that the water can flow from the Atlantic Ocean across this spit and into the marshland in the west, to the west. This is a move to, to do exactly that. Do we have any concerns about the existing dwelling and existing garage? Are they, they're not joined? Is that correct, Greg? They're not?
No, they are detached from each other. Correct.
Okay. But we would be losing both non-conforming structures and allowing to the question of water flow. If the structure is not blocking the water flow, it's, it's actually enhancing the potential for water to flow off the properties that surround it as opposed to further impacting it. Granted, if the contours are arranged properly, even adding the, the septic should be an improvement as opposed to adding to the, the problems that, that exist there just as in the nature of the fact of where the land is. So I'm, I tend to be in favor of it depending any, I'm looking for input from the neighbors who might have knowledge that I'm not aware of, but that which I have seen over the years there, watching floodwaters for, well, thoughtfully watching them for probably 45 years. I'm not too concerned that this is going to increase the issues. I think it will probably improve them.
All right, Bob, I think you were, you've unmuted. Do you have anything to add for us? Anything we're missing?
No, am I unmuted? Good. No, really not. I think there's a fair possibility that Ed's right, that it's likely when you get the final grading to actually give more protection to number 81 on the land on that side than exists now. If the wall is over two and a half feet in height above grade on either side, you need to think about a fence on top of it. So people don't fall off. That's part of the, part of the regulation. Pilings and FEMA elevation, that'll all be, be worked out certainly to the, the proper design. So I'm not concerned about that.
And then Bob, just a point of clarification, because I know it was also raised in the, in the butter's letter. In terms of height, our height by law takes into account, there, there is some compensation for those pilings, right? It's your understanding that this, this application will comply with our bylaw as to height, correct?
It's my understanding it would have to, otherwise it won't get a building permit. Of course. But you bring up an interesting point, the exclusion for the height limitation, which is normally in residential districts, 40 feet to the ridge or 35 feet to a point halfway between the eaves and the ridge, if you've got a sloping roof. There's an exception to that, which allows an additional 10 feet. If an existing house is raised on pilings to, to make it FEMA compliant. So if I have an existing house, for example, that's quite tall and I take that same house and I raise it, I do have that leeway to go above the 40 foot limit. With new construction, that's not the case. You're still having to maintain the 40 feet.
Thank, thank you for clarifying. So Greg, just to, just to confirm the 30 feet that is on your plan here, that includes the height of the pilings?
So we did submit a revised plan today, which has the overall height, which includes the pilings all the way to the ridge of the roof. It is compliant. It comes in at 39.8 feet to the ridge, 40 feet being what's allowed in the bylaw.
Thank you very much. Ed, you are muted. I think you might have.
Good calculations. That's. Does that make the difference de minimis? My favorite word.
It is. You do like that one. All right. So unless anyone on the board has anything else to add or any follow-up questions from Bob, we are going to open it up to public comment. So we would ask that members of the public who wish to speak would raise their hand, which can be done in the more section on your Zoom, or you could just raise your hand like Attorney Nagel is doing right there. And what appears to be Mr. Putnam and some other folks, and I will request to unmute you. I'm going to start with the Putnam's and Attorney Nagel, who are on the same team, if I'm correct. Yes? All right. So we are going to start with you. We just asked for the record and for the recording, if you could just give us your names and the, and your address there. But so I'm going to try to unmute you both here. You're going to see. There we go. And there we go. Should be able to, all right. You, it looks like you're both unmuted. So why don't you go ahead?
Very well. So for the record, Christian and Kristen Putnam, you can call us either name because we'll both answer to it. 81 Glades Road, so worthy of butters. We do have some concerns over the building and the site. First, I would start with Mr. Morse's contention that water flows from the east to the west. That is true in the worst of events, when the ocean breaches Glades Road. What is much more common, even in non-storm events, but simply high astronomical tides is a flow from west to east. And our concern is that if there's a retaining wall and fill, that is the salt marsh fills and the water flows in from Cohasset Harbor, that the water will fill our property more because currently it covers 83, 85. Yeah. It goes both ways. So in effect, by raising the fill of the property for the septic system, there's less room for that water that comes in on a flood tide from the marsh. So that's, that's one concern. Second concern is the overall size of the building that's, that's coming in in terms of going from under 1,200 square feet to over 3,500 square feet, very close to a salt marsh, which we all know is an environmentally sensitive area with the number of species that live in the area, but also the overall nature of the neighborhood. These houses started their lives as summer cottages have been added on to, like much of New England, but are still relatively modest in size within the neighborhood. Adding this property of over 3,500, over 3,400 square feet is certainly a change to the neighborhood and one that changes the character of the neighborhood, changes the character of the abutting land, in particular ours, and will add shadows, lack of views and change the nature of, of what we've, what we have currently. Moving on from that, I, I appreciate the the explanation of the height. That was quite helpful. I, what I would say about that, and I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation, but if I read the zoning bylaws appropriately, the first story of a home is the first floor that has more than 60% of the wall exposed above grade level. If I'm reading the plans appropriately, that entire garage level is a story. So we're not talking about a three-story house here. We're really talking about a four-story house. Now perhaps I misunderstand, this is not my line of work, but as I count them, I count four. The, we talked about the retaining wall and we have come to an accommodation in the, on the property of 83, which I know is not the topic of tonight. Appreciate the applicant making a change to that wall, so it will not block access. We've gone to the extent of suggesting that of, of having an attorney draft an easement so that we can be assured that in the future, because the lot lines are so close here, it's just the nature of the neighborhood, that some future owner won't decide to put up a fence as, as the building inspector indicated might be necessary along the wall. And I think with the drawing submitted today, that won't be an issue, but my concern would be a future owner putting something up so that we would not have access from our front door. And so I know that's not necessarily a, a concern for the board, but it's just one more concern over the property. I think unless Kristen has anything else, I think that covers the, the highlights of it.
Sure. And so to, just, I just want to understand, because I was, I was having trouble understanding and looking at satellite and the plans. Where is the concern that the 83 R property is going to block your access? I see your property has direct frontage on Glades Road, correct?
Correct.
But I, is that not your front door as you refer to it?
80, the front door is next to 83 Glades Road. There's a continuous, continuous wall that's proposed right along the property line. And if that were, as it was originally proposed, to go straight out to Glades Road or, or close to Glades Road, it would block our access to Glades Road. The applicant has changed the drawing so that it, that is not the case.
Okay.
So it's not 83 R that would block, that, that wall would not block us at 83 R. The concern with the wall and back is that it's going to increase the flooding on our property that would normally go on to 83 R.
Okay. I, I was still a little confused because it looks as though you have a, a walkway there.
There is a walkway there.
Fence. And so I, I was confused as to how they'd be allowed to block it because that appears to be your property. Probably.
In, in fact, it's not.
Feet of width, yes?
Yeah. In, in fact, it's not. The property line is maybe a foot off of the port for the front door. So it's, we have been using the neighbor's property and certainly from the prior neighbor had permission.
So that's, okay. So that's, and which makes sense that it's not on this plan because this plan, Greg, is for the real property. So you weren't concerned with accurately plotting lines for 83. It's all coming back to me now. Thank you.
I, I think Anthony, if you look at it, the, the lines for 83 basically go along the, the stair on 81. So basically 81 has a walkway that's on 83's property to get them around to the back or to the west side. So they can come up their stair. I got you. Clearly they're, they're utilizing it with permission of the owner. It's not a adverse possession situation, but as Mr. Putnam indicated, there was discussion about perhaps having a deed, a use easement included in the deed. And I think that's wonderful that the neighbors have had this conversation.
People, people working together. We love it.
Absolutely. With that, unless Attorney Nagel has more, we'll, we'll let him speak.
Attorney Nagel.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to pick up on that. I do appreciate the, the revision to the plan that was, that we got, I think just today. It shows the, you know, that wall kind of curving out to, you know, address our concern. So, so we do appreciate that. And you know, I think to really nail that down and, you know, an easement, a legal easement would, would be appropriate here and we would be seeking that. So you do have a copy of my letter I, I hear. And so I'd just like to reinforce what, what Christian said and just highlight a couple of points. A lot of discussion about flooding and, you know, it's an issue already. So we want to make sure that, you know, this project doesn't make it worse. And by, you know, obviously mound systems are required here, both for 83 R and 83, I believe. Necessitating this retaining wall. I'm wondering whether, you know, the retaining wall being right on the property boundary and obviously the, these septic system components being so close to the property line, you know, presents problems and principally, well, access, I think we might have that figured out, but also flooding, whether it's, whether it's stormwater or, or tidal influence. I'm wondering whether that could be mitigated by moving the system components to the right side of the, of the house. I mean, there's a lot of room over there. Or even underneath the house, seeing that it's a, a raised, you know, it'll be raised on pilings. That way there won't be a mound right next to the property boundary that would necessitate that retaining law. It might solve a couple of problems by maybe changing the location of the systems. It might solve a couple of problems by maybe changing the location of the systems.
Yes, Greg, please, I gotta do it, I, I will do that for you. There you go, Greg, you should be able to unmute yourself now, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. To, to discuss a couple of the points here that both were brought up by Attorney Nagel, as well as the Putnams. The septic system location can't really shift under the house too much, because of the proximity of the salt marsh directly behind the house. We tried to keep the septic system outside of a fifty-foot buffer from the salt marsh, which is what Title V requires, in its current location, it does comply with that. Moving it to the northerly side of the house, we did look at that option, putting it over there. The problem with that location is the right-of-way between number eighty-five and eighty-seven Glades Road. There's already a septic system constructed in that right-of-way for, for one of the abutting houses. You have to be a minimum of ten feet away from any abutters' septic systems, as well as due to the mounding of the septic system, you'd now be putting a, a higher grade on that right-of-way, which would make it not as traversable with, with vehicles. Where we, where we have the retaining wall along the side of the property line there, if you look at how the existing houses, the existing house is not a house that's elevated up on piles, but it is a house that is constructed at ground level. It's constructed six inches from the lot line, and that side of the house is thirty-eight feet length, and extends up vertically from the ground. The retaining wall that we're proposing, there is thirty-seven feet in length on this property, and essentially is in the same location, it's along the lot line, within six inches of where that existing house facade is. With regards to flooding, where we bring in the fill associated with the septic system, you absolutely will lose some flood storage capacity there. We are raising the grade over the septic system to bring it into compliance with Title V. However, where the existing garage is, and where the existing house is, that area right now, because it is taken up by the two buildings there, is not available for flood storage capacity. When we take those down and we put the new building up on piles, which are open piles allowing for water to flood under the house, those areas now become available, so that we have what's referred to as compensatory flood storage. What we've brought in for fill for the septic system is made up in available flood storage capacity underneath the proposed house. I would add in addition that both the Situate Conservation Commission, as well as the Massachusetts DEP, do not require flood storage capacity in areas that are subject to coastal storm events. When you're bringing in fill directly adjacent to a water body like the ocean, it's assumed that the ocean has infinite storage capacity. If we bring in ten cubic yards of fill, for example, to this site, we're not going to displace or raise the elevation of flooding on any of the abutting properties. The ocean has infinite storage capacity, so while this property, this area will not flood because the elevation has been brought up higher, it does not offset the floodwaters from the ocean onto the abutting properties.
So Greg, to be, to be fair to the applicants, their concern was less the ocean flooding, and more the, more the salt marsh flooding, so.
Yes, so the, so the flooding out back from Bailey's Creek, the salt marsh, which, which does flood onto this property, property, obviously, we've seen pictures of it, we've seen evidence of that. That is considered land subject to coastal storm flow, which it is directly attached to the ocean, it does have those same exemptions. Again, we're not taking any credit for those exemptions. The capacity that we've built in, now that we've raised the house, offsets the volume that we're bringing in for the septic system. So there's no loss in storage capacity at this site.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Yes, and along that same line, Greg has actually outlined it better than I had, but that was the point I was going to make. We were, we had our hands slapped by the Herringbrook Meadow project. The, the public has to appreciate that the zoning board has a requirement to act legally and lawfully, and that when the courts come and get involved, and they can slap our hands and say that you didn't take this into consideration. Herringbrook Meadow is an example of where they use this application, that the, the ocean has infinite capacity, and therefore, the small amount of fill, relatively speaking, although it might be enormous compared to what's there and the neighbors, et cetera, was not going to impact flooding whatsoever on the neighbor's property. I, I see this exactly the same situation, we have a salt marsh, we have tidal flooding, you know, normal high tide, lunar tides, et cetera, but we can't use that as an impact. I appreciate the Putnam's comments on it, but I think that, actually, Mr. Morse's comments that the compensatory aspect of loss of building structure on the ground is actually going to increase the amount of area near your home that can accommodate coastal flooding. So even though it is considered de minimis, or nonexistent, in terms of the, the law and the code, I'm accepting what's being said.
Yeah, Ed, I, I would follow you there. To, to, at the risk of oversimplifying it, when the ocean wants to come to a certain height, salt marsh included, it's going to come regardless of how much we fill one given property. Also, along the same lines with courts not being shy, rightly so, about reminding municipal boards about what they have a right to regulate and what they don't, we fall into that same category when we get into views and regulating size for certain reasons. I, in, unless we're dealing with a view easement that was obtained, or things like that, their power to regulate that is rather limited. Mr. Tremblay and Ms. Wykert, we are absolutely going to get to you, I saw you both raise your hands. I believe the Putnams had what I expect is a response to some of what they heard. I would just like to give them that opportunity, I'm going to unmute you again, I, I believe that must go stale. So hang on one moment for me. There you go, you should be up, there you go.
May I suggest if someone's unmuted for a particular topic, stay unmuted, don't, don't do the courtesy of muting yourself again, that may be allow you to continue to comment.
Sure, thank you. So, so two, two comments to that. Number one, the, the flooding currently goes underneath eighty-three R, there is a crawl space there, and so the flooding goes under into through eighty-three R. So I'm not quite sure that, that adding fill improves the flood situation. But we can tell you, and, and if you care to, to mention it, when the town filled the back parking lot for mine it, the neighbors immediately saw a change in the flooding on their properties. Now, there may be a theory that there's infinite capacity, but in that case, that infinite capacity was coming onto our property as a result of filling the back parking lot. So we have direct experience with this, and can tell you, this will increase the flooding.
I would, I would just like to add that it, it will, I don't understand how, when the salt marsh comes in, if we're level like this, and then eighty-three R gets lifted like this, and we're at the level of the marsh, the marsh is not going to crawl uphill onto eighty-three R, it's going to come faster onto our property, because it's at that level, and then it will continue to, in a faster rate, flood the, the, the mine at Beach Parking Lot, because that always gets flooded, Bailey's Causeway, et cetera, it just keeps on going. So what we're really concerned about is, I guess, I'm not understanding how, how adding fill right by the marsh is going to stop and help the, and block the flooding when it continues on. It's just going to come around onto our property and all the others faster than, than initially going under the eighty-three R house, and then slowly going sideways, it's just going to rush around the higher fell. So that's, if someone can talk to me about those physics.
Well, I, I don't think that there's necessarily a contention that this, these improvements are going to help the flooding on your property. And I, I am certain that the, that the law does not require a property owner to continue to subject themselves to the same flooding as they were previously, because it, and they have to have it just as bad. And for the reasons that were just explained, the law and certain governmental bodies' regulations doesn't view a raising of a certain property with respect to ocean-related flooding, which this would be, as a, as a violation or as a detriment to other properties, abutting properties, I should say. Greg, how, how did I do there?
Understood about the law, thank you.
Yes, Attorney Nagel, and then, and we would like to move on to some of the other butters who have that.
Yeah, yeah, it's not so much the volume, and, you know, we all know we can't hold back the ocean, it's just the direction. And we're concerned that between the mounding and the retaining wall, it's going to funnel more floodwaters onto the Putnam's property than what is currently existing. So, you know, so that is a concern. Stormwater also is a concern, and I'm wondering whether that could be mitigated by having infiltrating downspouts. And I, I don't know whether this is the proper forum to bring that up or not, but as long as we're on the topic of, of flooding, I would think that, I don't know whether that's in the design or not, but I would suggest that the applicant may think about infiltrating its downspouts to, you know, to mitigate any, any stormwater runoff that may impact the Putnam's property. Is that something you could address, Greg?
I, I'm, I'm going to take a shot at it, just for, I would think that stormwater, you know, infiltrating downspouts is not stormwater as in groundwater, it's rain. And you're adding to the groundwater with the infiltrating downspouts. We know that the groundwater table there is extraordinarily high, as a matter of fact, it's above the ground level. So, I don't, I guess my main concern here is that we can't, we have learned through court action, that there's only so many things we can do here. The applicant has mitigated, they can't create a flow of rainwater onto other people's property. They can't have groundwater, they can't have downspouts that dump onto someone else's property. But whether they're infiltrating or at, at, at grade, it's not going to make a huge difference. It's, the water's got plenty of places to go, right into the salt marsh. I know that Greg has responsibilities as an engineer to plan how that water flows, and I'll, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, thank you for that, I just want to throw in a couple more quick, really, points of clarification, if nothing else. With regard to the height of the proposed building, I may be misreading the bylaw, but correct me if I am. Six-twenty-point-one for an R-three, we're in an R-three district. I read that the height to be thirty-five feet, not forty, so am I misreading that?
I believe it's thirty-five feet to the, to the midpoint of the roof, Bob, is that correct?
I think if you go to the definitions section in the front of the bylaw, you'll find that height's defined in this case, and I think in the body of the bylaw too, I don't have a copy with me, but I could certainly find it and email it to you. But at any rate, the thirty-five feet is measured on a, on a pitched roof, to a point halfway between the eaves and the ridge.
My understanding that this is a, a mantered, a mantered roof, and that it's, in such a case, it's the average height between the eaves and the ridge of the gable, or rather, it's a gambrel, I think it's a gambrel. And in that case, under sixty, six-twenty-point-one, it does say thirty-five feet, but then it says, the calculation is the average height, and I'm quoting, the average height between the eaves and the ridge for gable hip and gambrel roofs. So, you know, I don't, but I think that, I think we're, we're working with thirty-five as a maximum height, however, it may be calculated rather than forty, but correct me if I'm wrong, I, that's just how I read six-twenty-point-one.
Yeah, so the height is defined even for a gambrel, when, when they say the average height between the, the ridge and the eaves, it's, it's essentially the midpoint of the roof.
The, the way, the way I, this was best explained to me was, if you have an A-frame structure, where that, those ski houses that go, the, the eve is at the, 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 the eaves are at ground level almost, and you have a high peak, it's measured between, halfway between the two. Whether this is on top of a structure or not, your definition, Attorney Nagel, is exactly the same as what our building inspector is, was commenting. The thirty-five is qualified under the plan that is proposed, they're meeting the expectations, even though the, the overall height at the ridge is just under forty. As long as it's under forty, and the midpoint is under thirty-five, we're in good shape.
Okay, and the last issue, again, it's a clarification. The, the plan, I'm, I'm confused about the setback from the property line for the proposed house. The plan looks like, not, it's nine-point-one for the existing dwelling, but I, you know, it looks like there's another box that goes right up to the property line, so I just need a little.
So it is not nine-point-one for the existing dwelling. The, the side yard setback on, on the, the southerly side, the side closest to your clients, is just over half a foot. It's a little confusing, because existing dwelling is labeled inside of the new proposed dwelling there, but the, the existing building, as I'm sure your clients well know, is, is six or seven inches off the property line. That is coming back to just over nine feet off the property line.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
With that, Ms. Wykert, I am going to attempt to unmute you. I believe you had something to add, yes?
Um, I do, and tonight's discussion has been interesting. I did send a letter in yesterday.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Delia Wykert, eighty-four Glades Road. I did send a letter to all of you yesterday, and I want to thank Janine for sending it around. I don't know if all of you had a chance to read it. It's fairly short, when you take out the photographs and the links, would you mind if I read it, since the, you know, people in the group that aren't part of the Board of Appeals wouldn't have heard it yet?
Why don't you go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This letter is being written in order to express my opposition to the permit being requested by PJ Antonick, I hope I'm saying that correctly, in Oak Development and Design, to raise and rebuild number eighty-three R Glades Road, and by doing so, increasing the non-conforming size by one-hundred-and-ninety percent. My home is located at eighty-four Glades Road, directly opposite the right-of-way entrance to eighty-three R Glades Road. My grandmother Hannah Litchfield-Higgs bought the property in nineteen thirty-six, it has passed from her to my parents and now to me. The length of time that I, we have owned our property and lived here, and the fact that I am a photographer gives me a unique knowledge of this particular section of Glades Road, both as I have experienced it throughout my lifetime and through my photographs. As we discussed, Mr. Antonick's proposed building, I feel it violates the intent of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the intent of the Situate Wetlands bylaw, because of the existing flooding on the property and the risks created to the saltwater marsh the property borders. The Building a Resilience Situate Climate Vulnerability Assessment and Action Plan presented in March of two thousand and eighteen reads on page nine that sea level rise will increase eight inches by twenty-thirty, just ten years from now. Within two thousand and twenty-one, we will have approximately ninety-six tides that will be a higher. Within twenty twenty one, we will have approximately ninety six tides that will be a higher height than nine point eight feet. This high tide is an average tide for this area. This means that close to one hundred tides, fifty days this year, counted from the US Harbor's tide chart for twenty twenty one. The property at number eighty three R will flood over the boundary of saltwater marsh and soil. With just four more inches of ocean rise. The proposed location for number eighty three R will have saltwater touching its foundation every day, and I realize it's up on pilings. As you know, when daily tides come higher under our properties, flood. Forced even higher, allowing wave action and erosion to damage even more square footage. And flooding increases soil saturation and increases groundwater levels. And infiltrates septic systems, which also cause damage to saltwater marshes. On the nine point eight foot tide of January ninth, twenty twenty one, and I did include photos of this. The leading edge of high water was slightly higher than the marsh border towards Glades Road than shown on Mr. Antonik's plans. This past Saturday, January sixteenth, we experienced a nine point point five foot tide with a one point two surge. The leading edge of the tide was several feet past the marsh facing side of these existing house. That's the west facing side towards the marsh. And again, I also included photos of that. Excuse me while I go through the photos. I also included photos of flooding surrounding eighty three R. And water rushing down Glades Road from south to north. And water exiting from my property through the right of way between eighty five and seven over the property of eighty three R Glades Road into the marsh. I'd like to add, it is also imperative that grade of Mr. Antonik's property continue to slant from grade at street level towards the level of the marsh. Overwash from the ocean exits from between the frontline houses and out to the marsh over Mr. Antonik's property. To block this process in any way, whether through permanent barricades. Or by bumping up the soil height will cause serious threats to Glades Road. And depending on the season, create flooding and fast water situations. Or ice that will make it impossible for the residents of the approximately eighty houses north of my property. To exit during storms or for first responders to answer rescue calls. The entrance to the marsh that borders Mr. Antonik's property begins in Briggs Harbor, roughly south and east of Bassings Beach and Cohasset Harbor. In recent years, the marsh entrance has broken down and disintegrated. Where there was an inlet with a distinct narrow opening and water deep enough for an outboard to maneuver, there is now a wide shallow estuary. I'm sure the town is aware of this problem and the increase in flooding partially due to the breakdown. Of the marsh banks, as the new larger culvert under Bailey's Causeway was recently installed. We have not seen a reduction in flooding in our neighborhood during full moon tide heights, though, even with the new larger culvert. And I did include an aerial drone shot that shows where the bank specifically is has broken down. The water absorption capabilities of a healthy saltwater marsh is beneficial to the property surrounding it. As proven by data collected after Hurricane Sandy. Salt marsh wetlands were responsible for saving over six hundred and twenty five million in damages spanning the coast from Maine to South Carolina. This means marshes prevented the equivalent of eleven percent of the total damage done by Sandy. More information, I'm sorry, that's a link that. The board could access. The nine year experiment and research done in the Plum Island Estuary here in Massachusetts that investigated the effects of coastal eutrophication. Or the response of aquatic systems to the addition of natural and artificial nutrients. Such as nitrates and phosphates present in fertilizers and sewage on salt marsh loss. Certainly proves that the buffer zones between septic systems and saltwater marshes are critical to the health of the marsh. The conclusion is that in New England, the decomposition of peat, which causes the marsh to deteriorate, is mostly from sewer and septic wastewater. Mr. Antonik's request for a nonconforming expansion of one hundred and ninety percent. And request to reduce the buffer zones normally required for septic systems on this property that floods. Is extreme for such close proximity to a saltwater marsh, showing signs of deterioration. And which is protected by the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Situate Wetlands bylaw. I remain against granting the one hundred and ninety percent expansion requested. I thank you for your time. The reason why I wanted to read this and bring up these points is that all of these things that I'm talking about. Expand with the increase in size of the new build. And from my point of view, when you take three foundations that are not connected one. You know, one to another, especially within this one hundred foot buffer zone that was created for a reason. That's a new build. I don't see how that becomes a raise and rebuild. And I really object to the size allowance. And because everything else could decrease in size, if we weren't talking about a one hundred and ninety percent expansion. I I just don't understand why that's even allowable in this buffer zone and this area that floods as much as it does. And where water flowage is so important. Added to that based on tonight's discussion. I am so against that retaining wall. I have lived here my whole life. You cannot put up a solid obstruction in this neighborhood without it damaging. Everything around it. It will damage Mr. Antonik's property. It will damage Chris and Kristen's property. That is one of the worst things I've ever heard of in this neighborhood. When it comes to water flowing in from the marsh. A mounded lot is absolutely going to push water up onto other people's properties. I've been watching that happen here my whole life. It happens, and I understand what you're saying about. Having some restriction about the way things are are viewed under the courts and the wording and all that. But again, if we could talk about a more reasonably sized expansion, then we're not talking about as much. Being and as many variances and everything else that is taking place with this property. So. Can we?
If I can, if I can comment for a minute.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ed.
All right, a couple of things. I do appreciate where you're coming from, Ms. Weickert, the. Everything you're suggesting. Basically says that with rising tides, et cetera, that everyone in the neighborhood should go up on pilings. Everyone should be doing what this applicant's asking to do. When you talk about nitrogen loading and issues in the salt marsh. The existing system that's there, I'm sure is going to be is currently more. Compromising to the salt marsh than the proposed system. Increasing the quality and proving the equality of the proposed of the effluent coming from a. Structure, a dwelling is is what we want to see happen. I appreciate that it's a it's a mounded system. I I haven't seen the particular designs of the system, but that's not our board's decision. The the but it's got to be better than what's there. I would love to see the the town be able to put in sewage throughout Glaze Road area. There was a plan back in the nineteen early nineteen sixties for a complete sewer-ing of the entire town. And the town saw it as not economically feasible. They voted against it. It was ninety percent paid for by the federal government. They voted against it terribly short sighted. But I can't suggest that that having one out one. Property owner raised their property above the the floodplain. In compliance with current regulations, in bringing it up to code in any way, shape or form. Increases the danger to the salt marsh or the neighboring properties. I do appreciate that the 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 that other properties will flood and this one may not because of the raised area. But again, we have been told by the courts, by the scientists, we got to follow the science. That that the ocean is infinite in its capacity. The the increasing the elevation of one property is not going to increase the amount of water on any neighboring property. It's not about. Anecdotal evidence. Every storm is different. Every experience is different. It's not anecdotal evidence, it's what is science, what the calculations are by the. Those people who know much more about it than I do. I. I I don't have any way to stop someone from developing their land. I don't think that. If this was an empty lot, we'd be talking about another issue. Land subject to flooding. It's not an empty lot. There's a house that exists there. They're offering to improve that house, improve the septic system. And nothing that they're doing is going to is doing anything that's different than. Than what's there other than improving it. It's not it's not increasing. The the danger to the salt marsh or to the neighbors or anyone else. If they can build, if the courts can make us build Herringbrook Meadows. And I'm sorry to use that. I I think they worked very hard with us to do a good project there. But I think that's a place where it should never have happened. But we have to have, we we were forced to allow them to do something, and that that developer has done a very good job of working with the board. But in the bottom, the. At the end of the road. We're asking this, these folks are asking to improve. A substandard property with a substandard septic system and bring it up to current code, and I think they should be, it should be welcomed.
And then ju- just to clarify one other point there, there are no variances requested in connection. With this application, it's just important to clear the record of that. They are not looking for any relief with respect to their septic system. It's actually quite the opposite, is my understanding. We have a septic system that is not in compliance, that is being brought into compliance. While the size, the the living space of the home is being increased. It's a four bedroom home that is remaining a four bedroom home. These are important things to keep in mind that go into that. That that addressed some of the concerns that you were raising, which I I don't think anyone disagrees with, you know. Salt marshes would be better off if no one lived anywhere near them. And to Ed's point. We have a home here now. We obviously have a lot of development about this. This is about making that development better on the whole. I recognize that one of butter here or there may feel that a portion of that development or an aspect of it is a detriment. That is their right. But we're at where we're at, and I'm I'm sorry, with that, I would like, Mr. Tremblay has been waiting very patiently. I would like to give him a moment. I'm going to try to unmute him here. There you, oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Tremblay, seventy one Glades Road. So I'm probably going to be reiterating just briefly. What Delia said, but she took a lot of the wind out of my sails with. Her eloquent and well researched comments, and I understand the. Limitations you folks are are seeing, particularly with having had your hand slapped previously. But I, you know, we about the the beach parking lot, we look. Down in the beach parking lot, and the amount of flooding has increased. Significantly in the amount of time that we've been there. The Putnam's are correct that upgrading that back parking lot clearly changed the flow of water in the marsh. And resulted in increased flooding of that parking lot right to our driveway. Which, you know, we have to calculate when we can leave or when we have to park on the street. We know, we look down on eighty eighty three R, we know it floods regularly. We know the water flows under it and around it. All those have have been previously stated. But what I do, I guess, take some exception to is Mr. Morse's comments. That this because Cohasset Harbor is directly connected to the ocean. And this marsh is connected to to Cohasset Harbor, that it's all one body of water. And it all acts the same, and that is not correct. And. The. If we have a a high tide or regular moon tide, I you know, that water just comes up. Storms are not the issue there, and it's. Tides act differently in different areas. You can't assume that. The ocean is has unlimited capacity to absorb and therefore this is connected and therefore it's the same. I think environmentalists would take some specific objection to that. The the other comment I wanted to make, and this is. Really. More of just a practical sense. My wife actually came up with this comparison. But when you. Look at all the properties that are being developed. Both in this project and an adjacent project by the by the same applicant. We we are taking one small house, eighty three R, which had two occupants and one toilet. And three abandoned buildings with no use. And and we're adding fifteen toilets to that area. And somehow with this sensitive marsh there and that degree of flooding. Regardless of the upgrades and the septic systems, these were largely unused septic systems. And so I think there is a huge difference between what is existing and what is proposed.
Thank you.
Could can I ask just one question, very quick one?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. And first of all, I really do appreciate the responses that you gave me earlier. I just, what I'm questioning, and I'm not trying to be abrasive in any way, this is really just a question that I don't don't know the answer to. So this applicant is is put forward a hundred and ninety percent expansion. And we're in a very sensitive area within the hundred foot buffer zone, all of that. Does the board have the ability to say, no, a hundred and ninety percent is too large an expansion expansion for this area for all of these? Environmental reasons. So do you have the ability to say, no, this simply is too big? Can we look at a? You know, less of a reduction in size?
You know, that is a rather nuanced question. I. Do we don't have the ability to enforce environmental regulations. We don't have the ability to allow the applicant to not comply with environmental regulations. That's that's important. Thing to review there. We do arguably have the ability to consider environment, to make environmental considerations. In determining whether something is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. What I can tell you is that I have considered those with respect to these this application. And while I understand what folks are saying that more toilets may be used, I don't know about fifteen, but. I, there are significant environmental benefits to this application that I feel. To the extent we are, we should be making environmental considerations, which. Thank God and the the rules of land use that we are not the only folks taking those things into consideration. I feel that this is a net positive. There is a, this is an outdated structure, a not particularly well maintained piece of property. With a noncompliance septic, which is the worst absolute thing. In my mind, anyone who has an overlying concern about septic and effluent in their relation to a salt marsh. Who would speak out against this application is. Needs to take another look at their stance, in in my opinion. We have a noncompliant septic system. We're going to make it a compliant septic system. The salt marsh is going to thank everyone for that.
Let me just comment to that or appreciate your answer. I don't agree with you on that simply because. We're dealing with flooding every day. This is not a storm issue. This is a daily event. This is a monthly event. This comes around several days within every month. And with the increases we're seeing just in the last twenty years, with the height of everything that has changed so much. The these are real problems that are just going to keep increasing. So when we talk about the size of the house, which means a larger septic system because there's more water usage, it isn't just. It, well, there is because there's more.
So let's let's stop, let's stop right there. That's not accurate. That's not accurate. Four bedrooms is four bedrooms, whether they're little bedrooms or big bedrooms. Size is not the issue here. I do appreciate Ms. Mike it, but let's stay on target with comments that we can we can utilize.
That's fine.
This building could be three hundred times bigger, five hundred times bigger. If it's still only four bedrooms, it's only four bedrooms. The the we perceive not how many toilets there are, but how many seats there are in the building to sit on those toilets. That's the issue. There are four bedrooms. A four bedroom house is perceived to be able to handle X number of people living in it. And X number of people do X number, X amount of excrement. That's the issue we're talking about. We're not talking about the living space. We there could be a ballroom attached to the structure. It doesn't matter in terms of what we're talking about with septic. So we have to be really careful there. When we talk about a structure being increased in size. One of the reasons that part of the bylaw was added to the bylaws is because. Places like like Glades Road, like Lighthouse Point. Small structures, and this is goes back to Mr. Tremblay, I think was the one that made the comment about the small structure, or it may it may have been the Putnam's. Being increased in size, that's happening, and we do have to. That's happening and we do have to some degree, um, something to say about that. But in this case, this particular property, the structure that's proposed is well within the building. Um, guidelines of the setbacks of this property. Um, there's, it, it is not. Think of, again, I'm sorry to pick on another part of town, but think about Lighthouse Point. Um, some of those postage stamped lots ended up having buildings on them because the pre-existing conditions. Where they are just a couple of feet from the lot lines. It's eighty, ninety percent covered with building on the, the, that's not the case here. So in terms of, um, what we can do to limit size. Um, is more or less, is more a question of how does the structure fit on the property? And again, I recognize the particular individual neighboring properties, but we have to look at the entire neighborhood. And there are other properties that are more, um, significant in their. Uh, in their proportions to the lot size than this proposed structure. Um, yes, it's bigger. It's still four bedrooms. It's an improved septic system. It's on pilings. If every, if every property in the neighborhood could be on pilings, we'd reduce some of the flooding issues we have there. But we can't make every property owner do that. This property owner is offering to do that, asking to do that. And that's what we have to focus on.
Okay. Well, thank you for the education. I'm not, not someone who attends a lot of ZBA meetings, so I don't know how. The laws and regulations work. Um, I'm just going to say, I really appreciate all your comments. I still do remain against the overall one hundred and ninety percent increase and definitely the retaining law that's being proposed. Okay?
Thank you very much. Attorney Nagel, yes, I, I would just ask that we, we try to avoid, uh, rehashing to the extent we can. I do want to hear what else you have to add.
Yeah.
But we've been going at it for a little while here.
I just want to make the point, you know, that I respectfully disagree with the point that, uh. Ed made about size. I mean, I think size is a relevant issue when, uh. Looking at the standard of whether it's, the, the proposal is substantially more detrimental than the, uh, pre-existing, uh, non-conformity. Uh, you know, a hundred and ninety percent, that's a big increase. Uh, you know, everybody's cheek by jowl down there already. And frankly, it's not just this one parcel. Um, you know, there's several other parcels that are undergoing a similar, uh, expansion. And the, the impact to the neighborhood is significant. And, uh, I think it's, you know, reasonable minds could, could disagree. Over whether this project and the others that are being proposed. Uh, establish a, a substantial, uh, impact that's substantially more detrimental than. What is existing. And I would ask the board to carefully consider that.
I, I just want to directly rebut. This property may be increasing in size, but it is, it is becoming more conforming in this proposal. It right now is less than a foot from the lot line. It's going to be, um, over nine feet from the lot line. It's the setbacks, which are what we're concerned about in zoning. All the setbacks are improving. There's, this is not in, other than the fact that it is bigger in terms of living area. It's not increasing its non-conformities on the lot. So, um, that's what we have to deal with here in zoning.
Yeah, and I just, people are very focused, I understand, on the flooding because it's something they live with day to day. Um, but to Ed's point, um, you should also consider fire safety. And part of moving, uh, buildings off the lot line, um, uh. Is to allow, uh, you know, distance between the buildings so one house doesn't catch another house to allow for fire. Um, personnel to be able to get back and forth. So there are multiple considerations. That's all. Yeah, Greg. Greg, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. When it comes to building size, I might add that. The footprint on the ground of the proposed structure is smaller than the footprint on the ground of the structures out there. Uh, the structures out there are sixteen hundred and twenty square feet on the ground. So the proposed building, while the gross floor area is bigger because we're adding a second level and a third level. The footprint is fourteen hundred and fifty-six. That's what allows us to bring the setbacks into compliance. In the rear yard and on the side yard.
Thank you, Greg. So with that, I don't believe that we have anyone else from the audience. Who is looking to speak. Um, if you do, could you please raise your hand and maybe raise your hand on video as well? But I don't think that is the case. So, um, with that, unless any members of the board have anything else that they would like to add. I would, uh, welcome a motion.
I'll move that the board grant the application of, um. Oak Development and Design, Paul Antonik. For the raise and reconstruction of the property at eighty-three Glades Road in, um. Uh, as described in the plan entitled eighty-three Glades Road Assessor's Map. Five, three, twenty-three and twenty-four, Situate, Massachusetts. By Morse Engineering and dated twelve, fifteen, twenty revised twelve, twenty-nine, twenty. I believe that's the most recent.
Sorry, revised, uh, one, twenty-one, twenty-one is the.
Revised one, twenty-one, twenty-one. Um, and that to, and or further to find that, um. This will not create any new non-conformities and to the extent that it may intensify, that those are less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Seconded. All those, uh, in favor, one at a time, Anthony Buchanan, aye.
Tibbetts, aye.
Harrison, aye.
speaks aside.
And the ayes have it. So thank you all. Um, if the, if the applicants, uh, anyone who's speaking on this wish to remain, we would just ask that they mute themselves. Um, we are going to move on to the third application on the docket. Um, Susan, would you mind reading the third application? I'm going to be right back.
Need to be off from here to do that. Um, the third application, Alan and Marion Brown of forty-nine Collier Road, Situate. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL Chapter forty A, Section six and or. Eight, ten point two of the Situate zoning bylaw to allow raising and reconstruction of pre-existing non-conforming. Single-family dwelling with a greater front yard setback than a pre-existing non-conforming setback. But less than the required front setback at forty-nine Collier Road, Situate. Um, and then Assessor's Map sixty-four block six, parcel fourteen. Is there, um, who's?
Hi, hi, this is Paul Aravito.
Oh, great, you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
We can, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Paul Maravito. I'm a, uh, registered professional, uh, answer there. And I'm here representing the owner and applicant, Alan and Marion Brown. Um, the applicants recently purchased this home at forty-nine Collier Road, um, in June of two thousand and twenty. Um, they are proposing to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling. Since they purchased the home, we have received approval from the North River Commission. Um, we're currently in front of the Conservation Commission, um, seeking approval to, uh, construct a home. Showing the location shown on the plan. The purpose of this application is to seek permission to set the front of the house. Sixteen point seven feet from the front, uh, yard setback of, uh, Collier Road. The existing structure is fourteen point three feet. And we're proposing, the average setback is twenty point seven. We did that calculation a while ago. The, um, if it was a vacant lot, the front yard setback would be thirty feet. Again, the average setback is twenty point seven. We're asking to, um, have a. Setback of the proposed structure of fourteen point seven feet. The reason we're asking for this is, uh, we are in front of the commission and by, by moving it forward approximately four feet toward the street. We can increase our separation from the velocity zone. The proposed house is shown on the plan is not in the velocity zone. Um, it's about four to twelve feet uphill of it. The rest of the structure is in a AE zone. And the upper portion of the house is in Zone X. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's on a coastal bank for a portion of the house in the back. But again, the reason for our application is to seek permission to, um. Place the front of the house sixteen point seven, I'm sorry, sixteen point seven feet from the street line. Which would push the house back two point four feet from where it is at, at, in the current condition. Just to, just to give you a perspective for the, for the height of the house. The North River Commission only allows the house to be thirty-five feet in height. And that's measured from the rear of the house, which is the ocean side up to the peak of the roof. The, the elevation of the backyard is elevation twelve. So if you had thirty-five feet, that means the peak of the roof can only be at elevation forty-seven. The front of the house is at elevation twenty. If you subtract, uh, twenty elevation twenty from elevation forty-seven. If someone's on the street looking at the house, the peak of the roof would be twenty-seven feet above the elevation of the street, which is relatively low. Come, uh, compared to other structures. And again, the peak of that roof is set by the North River Commission, which is lower than what's allowed under the, uh, Situate zoning by law. Um, I just point that out for a, a point of reference. Um, the side yard setbacks are all conforming. The only non-conformity of this lot is the, um, front yard setback, which is fourteen point three feet. It's not conforming because it's less than the average setback. Um, I think with that, I'll end and my presentation, that's any questions the members may have.
So Paul, just to be clear, the only, the real, the reason you cannot bring, um, the new house. Into complete conformity is because of the conservation slash wetland issues, right?
Well, we have the house at twenty point seven feet right now. In order, we're, we're trying to increase the setback on the rear of the house from the velocity zone. Um, the, uh, proposed house is outside the velocity zone by anywhere from seven to twelve feet. What we're doing and, um, what we're trying to do is, uh, in, increase that separation by. Uh, moving it closer to the street by four feet and.
Well, when you say, I'm sorry, when you say the existing house, I mean, this, what I have here says the existing house is fourteen point three feet.
That's the existing house, right?
Right. What, what you're saying is that you, the average setback is at twenty point seven.
Twenty point seven.
Be, you're right, you would be happy to do it at twenty point seven, except you can't.
Right.
Just so, to simplify it for people that might be listening. Okay, got it.
Um, George, I think just to, and, and please, Paul, tell me if I'm wrong here. I think you're suggesting that you have the ability to, um, position the house at the average setback and you wouldn't have to be before us. However, you believe the project could be improved if you were to position it closer to the street at sixteen point seven. Which is still further from the street than the existing structure at fourteen point three.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the, one of the reasons I, I kept it at sixteen point seven was so they'd have the ability to park. A vehicle in the driveway, well, without being within the street layout. The, the, the garage is on the left side of the house as you look at it from the street. That sixteen point seven would afford on the ability to, to park two cars in the driveway. And not be within the way out of Collier Road.
Well, you just answered, you just answered my main question. That would be my main concern on this property is, um. And we have been concerned in many properties that, um. If the dwelling or the garage is too close to the street, there's no off-street parking in the driveway. People coming out of garages don't have, uh, vision, you know, line of sight. Um, you've, you've answered that that's your main concern with, um, not asking to be closer than the sixteen point seven. Sixteen point seven affords that view line, um, and off-street parking. Um, and if you, if you move it back to twenty, what did you say, twenty point seven? You don't even have to be before us. So the relief you're asking is, isn't to improve the, the project without, um, compromising. Uh, health and safety of the neighborhood.
That's correct.
And just to, the, the square footage of the reconstructed home is exactly the same as the current home?
The, um, the width of the house is essentially the same as the existing house. It's the, um, uh, depth of the house. Looking at the plan is about eight to ten feet, uh, deeper than the existing one. The existing one's a relatively small one. It's that brick home. It's up on, um, Collier Road.
Yeah, yeah, Paul, I think we just, um. You know, I, I understand the argument that it's not necessary, given that we have, we have a large enough lot here. I, I think just that. From a matter of procedure, it's helpful to have the prior and proposed square footage.
Um.
Can I help you? And if you don't have that now, I, I'm not sure that's a problem. I think we just need to get that. I think Mr. Brown has that. I think he might, I don't believe you're muted, so.
Can I help you with that? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can.
That, perfect. So the existing structure is a little over three thousand square feet. And the new structure will be four thousand and sixteen square feet. So it's about a twenty, little over twenty percent increase. But no, I didn't get the math right. Almost about twenty-eight percent.
I think you're talking the, uh, living area, Alan?
Correct. The inside living area.
Anthony, you turned it about the footprint on the ground?
No, I, I was talking about the living area.
Oh, okay.
And because it's a conforming lot and we don't have to worry about that, it's not, that, that bylaw doesn't come into play. Uh, all we're really talking about is setback from the street here.
Yeah. That's the only thing we're asking for.
Bob, did you have anything?
Not really. I mean, along that stretch of Collier there. There are houses, uh, that certainly are closer than this one. Uh, even though the average may be calculated at two hundred feet from the property line. Uh, I, I think if you go along Collier, you're going to find out there are many situations that. Uh, are closer and, uh, less, less attractive than this. I think pulling it away. From the water, uh, and danger in that direction, uh, is generally a good idea.
Yeah, there's a little more danger if you move it closer to the street that I skull a nine iron into the yard, but. Other than that, you should be fine.
Thank you.
Did, uh, George or Susan, we good?
All set. My questions are answered.
Yeah, all set. Thank you.
All right. If we have anyone in the audience who is looking to contribute. If you could please raise your hand using the zoom function or turn on your video and raise your actual hand. And, um, we're going to start with Mr. Nelson here. It looks as though he's already unmuted.
Yes, um, I had a question for Paul and this relates to what happens on the ocean side. So I understand that the front, um, footprint comes forward to the street under this application for special permit. And just wondering as it relates to the, um, present footprint versus the new footprint towards the ocean. How, how much of a deviation is there, uh, on that? Once you've come forward to the street. What, how much of a difference? I, I actually got the plan, but it doesn't show kind of, you know. What the, what that deviation would be from the present to, um, what would be proposed.
If I use the existing house as a, a reference.
Yes.
The front line of the house is going to be, um. Approximately two and a half feet further back from the street than it is now. The, the rear of the house would be about. Eight to ten feet, uh, further back to the rear of the existing house. Then beyond that, there's a open deck. Then beyond that, there's a open deck, which is coming off the first floor, which is about six and a half feet above the flood zone. And then from there, they'll they'll have a relatively small backyard. And behind their yard on their property is the stone revetment. The the end of it is pretty much at the end of their lot line. I've also been told that the town is in the process of planning to raise and reconstruct a revetment and they want to reconstruct it closer to the street. So the width of the house that's proposed is within a foot or two of the same width of the existing house. The back of the house will be moved toward the ocean about eight to ten feet. And the front of the house will be pushed back two and a half, about two point four feet from where it is now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and and so under under all the current zoning, that eight to ten foot is all it's all compliant under all the current zoning in place?
Yes, all all the setbacks are conforming, with the exception of the front yard setback, which is which is nonconforming and it has been since the house was constructed.
Excellent. And I had one last question, and that as it relates to height, as you talked about the North Commission, the thirty five feet, how does that relate? And this goes back to the previous applicants earlier in the evening. If it's thirty five feet, does that include or exclude the ten or twelve feet pilings?
This this house is out of the velocity zone, so is not proposed to be on pilings. It'll be a reinforced concrete foundation.
Okay. So basically, we're looking at a thirty five feet to the middle based upon kind of currently what the what the what the land looks like right now.
No, the thirty five feet is measured from the rear of the house, which is twelve feet above sea level elevation wise. And the North River Commission's only allows you to go from from that elevation twelve up thirty five feet to the peak of the roof. Under the situational by law, you could go up thirty five feet to the midpoint between the peak of the roof and the eve. So the North River Commission is really forcing this house to be less high than it could be under the situational by law. And what I was saying earlier was that because of that, if you look at it from the street, from from the from the front of the house at ground level on the street side up to the peak of the roof, they'll they'll be about twenty seven feet high. Under the situational by law, that could be anywhere from say about eight to thirteen feet higher. But it can't because of the North River Commission.
Sure. And Paul, I appreciate it. And you know, we've talked in the past. My understanding is that right now it's at twenty six feet. So basically, what we're saying is if we're standing on the street, we have an increase of nine feet. Is that kind of, I'm getting it down to layman's terms.
You mean the setback or the height?
The height, a height.
Yes, that that's correct.
Well, it's a nine foot difference. If we were standing on the street right now, then what's presently there?
I believe so. Let me check the zoning to be right.
I appreciate it, Paul, looking at that.
I think, Mr. Nelson, that the the seven feet you you said is twenty seven and you could go up seven to get to the thirty five. That's under situational by law. But because situational by law is superseded here by the North River Commission, it's actually going to be less than that. I'll leave it to Paul to tell us the actual number, but it's actually going to the the degree that it can increase in height is less than the seven feet that the zoning by law would allow. Because the North River Commission limits it by the, not the average grade, but the the grade at the rear. So the elevation at the rear dictates the elevation of the house from the rear, which forces the front to be lower because the difference in this sloping lot that the front is so much, the the grade at the front is so much higher. Whereas the situational by law works on average grade.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And as you know, there's been a lot of construction on homes up and down Collier. So it's some on pile on some not. So it's it's complicated, especially for people that aren't in the business like you guys are. So, you know, on behalf of some of my neighbors who I'm kind of talking for, we're just trying to figure out if we stand in the street, how much taller is this house going to be? That's about as basic as it's going to be.
I teach I teach ancient civilization to seventh graders. I'm not in the business. I just have been around it a bit.
I appreciate that. My takeaway is that it's nine feet taller. That's my takeaway from Paul's explanation.
Oh, that's a that's a toss to Paul. Is it nine feet taller, Paul, or is it less than nine feet? It could be as much as nine feet, but I think it's less from what I'm hearing.
I believe the nine feet is correct. Yeah, just just to reiterate, what happens is that that thirty five feet from the North River, the North River Commission is concerned about what they see for a height of a building as they look at it from the North River or the ocean. The elevation of the ground behind the house is around elevation twelve, but the street is at elevation twenty. So, you know, there's an eighth, there's a there's an eight foot difference right there. But again, they they only allow you to go thirty five feet from the ground up to the peak, which is much different than what the zoning by law allows. Zoning by law, zoning by law would let you go much higher.
So you're saying that the thirty five feet is from the twelve at the back, at the lower. Well, as always, thank you very much. I appreciate the
Thank you for your comments.
We have anyone else from the public looking to comment on this application? Yes, Mr. Cubellus.
Yes, Len Cubellus and my wife Jenny here. We are neighbors at fifty five Collier and certainly encourage the board to to approve this this request for the variance. We think it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood and and look forward to Alan and his wife joining us.
All right.
I don't want to be a stickler, but I just want to tell Mr. Cubellus that it's not a variance. We're just doing a finding special permit. This is variance is a higher level of concern. This is the kind of thing we do more routinely.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts.
All right. Anyone else from the public? Think that's going to do it.
If you'd like a motion, I'll
Always.
Propose that the board accept approve the request by the applicant to raising reconstruct a dwelling at forty nine Collier Road in accordance with the Z B A, the plan prepared and entitled Z B A Plan for Forty Nine Collier Road in Situate, Massachusetts, December fifteenth, twenty twenty, prepared by Ross Engineering. And that the proposed nonconformity is less nonconforming than existing nonconformities and to the extent that it may that it may increase, what's the word I'm looking for?
Intensify.
Intensify, intensify. It is less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Well, all those in favor, Anthony Buchanan, I.
Tibbetts, I.
Exercise.
Harrison, I.
The eyes have it. Janine, did we tell you who was going to write the the first decision there? We didn't. So on on eighty three R, I'll take that one.
I'll take this one.
Perfect. And so it'll be Ed on forty nine Collier.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move on to the fourth application. Out of Thomas Blake of Twelve Oceanside Drive in Situate care of Morse Engineering, requesting a special permit fighting in accordance with M G L forty eight, section six and or sections eight, ten point two and section four seventy of the situational by law to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at Twelve Oceanside Drive. Mr. Morse, you're still with us. If you could please tell us a little bit about this application.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineer Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner and applicant, Thomas Blake. The property is located at Twelve Oceanside Drive. Mr. Blake purchased the property this past year, began doing renovations to the home that was out there and realized that the house was beyond repair and it was going to trigger a significant upgrade to bring it into FEMA compliance. At which point, he decided to move forward with this application as a raise and rebuild. The site is located at Twelve Oceanside Drive. It's in the R three zoning district. It's in the floodplain overlay district. The lot itself is five thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet. The house on the lot, per the assessor's card, was built in nineteen seventy eight. Also on the property is a detached garage. The property itself is nonconforming with respect to zoning, the lot area being fifty seven seventy, where ten thousand square feet is required. The frontage at forty six feet, where a hundred feet is required. The lot width at forty six feet, where a hundred is required. The side yard for the house complies. However, the side yard associated with the garage is at one point eight feet. The rear yard measurement, we measured to an interior lot line. This property does extend down to mean low water associated with the beach. But to the interior rear lot line, the house sits five point six feet off of that. The house is non-FEMA compliant as it sits today. The proposal is to take down the existing house, leave the garage in place, and then replace the house with a new building. The new building would be twenty four feet by thirty eight feet. It would be constructed on a FEMA compliant pile foundation. And it would comply with front yard and side yard setbacks. The proposal is a two and a half story building. It results in a floor area of two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which represents a seventy nine percent increase over what's at the site today. I'd turn it over to you for any questions.
Members of the board?
I can start with a couple of questions. Greg, the the rear line setback is existing at five point six and proposed at six is obviously an improvement. It but I can't I can't tell that does the does the lot extend out to mean low water, mean high water? Is that how it's described in the plan and the deed?
It does. It extends out to mean low water. Correct.
So when we're saying, we're saying that the five point six or six point oh is mean low water? Or the or the perhaps the the retaining wall, the seawall?
So this this property essentially is two lots. There's a lot that's on the land side of the seawall, and then there's a lot that's on the ocean side of the seawall. Since this lot was originally created, though, the seawall has been rebuilt or relocated. And so this house obviously is on the land side of the seawall. It's approximately fifteen feet off of the seawall. But that lot line that exists there, although it doesn't divide ownership at this point, I gave you a measurement to it of five point six feet. The rear lot line out to mean low water is probably, you know, in excess of the rear yard setback. It is compliant with the rear yard setback.
And wouldn't ownership, those you you folks know more than I do, but doesn't ownership in in two proper, two lot, two lots undersized, don't they combine? I mean, aren't we really talking about a real line setback that is already conforming?
Yes, I'm again, I'm giving you the measurement to that interior line, which is how we've labeled it there. The the true rear yard would be the ocean. We are showing that there's common ownership. We're showing a hash mark through that interior line, which is the designation kind of on the left side lot line, the left back corner of the house to show that it is common ownership between those two properties.
So what I'm getting at is that the front yard setback complies as proposed, the side yard setback complies as composed as proposed. The rear yard, based on what I'm suggesting, also is in compliance. We're not changing, we can't change the lot size, the area, the frontage of the width and the building height doesn't violate any of our of our bylaws. All we're really talking about is a gross floor area increase of seventy nine percent. That's really the only thing before us tonight. Is that is that fair?
That is correct. Yes.
Not too shabby for an eighth grade teacher that doesn't know that much about real estate.
Seventh grade.
No, seventh grade, excuse me. I would agree. George and Susan, anything else?
Not for me.
Not for me either.
All right. With that, I I mean, I guess I should say, I know, I think any questions that I had have been answered by Mr. Morse. Bob, anything to add on this one? Relatively straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, a great improvement, certainly, to get the property up on pilings FEMA compliant. Garage remains, they'll have to be flood vents put into the existing walls. Other than that, pretty straightforward.
To you, Bob, the proposed structure is closer to the existing garage than the existing structure. Does that create any issues from a building standpoint? Either the proposed structure having to be firewall protected or whatever, or the garage having to be brought up to gray, up to code. I I'm only asking this for the applicant's edification, whether we, they need to be aware of something.
Certainly, if it's the neighbor and you're that close, you do need fire protection along the wall that's that's abutting. Between the home and the garage, I would certainly suggest in this case that the rear wall of the garage be sheathed and fire retired in your fireproof gypsum board, the way you would do a garage if it in fact were attached to a house. So there has to be a fire partition between the garage and the house. If it's attached, it would make a lot of sense to do it this way. I'd have to look up the the exact wording of the of the regulations concerning it, but it would be a very sensible thing to do.
I'm not putting, not trying to put you on the spot, just just raising a concern.
Yep, that's very good.
All right. If we have any members of the public that wish to be heard on this application, if you could please raise your hand, whether it be real or virtual. Please do turn on your video if you're using your real hand, though. All right. I do not think we have anyone for this. And with that.
I'll try another another motion. Motion to that the board approve the application of Thomas Blake to raise and reconstruct the dwelling at Twelve Oceanside Drive in accordance with the plan titled Twelve Oceanside Drive, Assessor's Map forty one twenty, Situate, Massachusetts, by Morse Engineering and dated twelve sixteen twenty with a revision one twenty one twenty one. And and find that the proposed does not increase any nonconformities and the in, to the extent that it may intensify, that is not to not more detrimental, significantly more, no more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm getting tired.
That's allowed. Seconded. All those in favor, Anthony Buchanan, I.
Tibbetts, I.
Success, I.
Harrison, I.
Harrison, aye.
All right, the ayes have it. You, does, does someone want to take that one? Thank you, George. All right, that'll be George. We are going to move on to our fifth application of the evening. Application of Stephen Connolly of 96 Pratt Road in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, section six and or section eight, 10.2 of the Situate zoning by law to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 215 Tilden Road in Situate. With that, is that attorney guard that I see?
It is. Hi, Anthony.
How are you?
Good.
Why, why don't you take us through what's going on here?
Well, actually Greg Morse is on this tonight and he's on such a roll that I don't want to stop the train. So I think I'm going to defer and allow him to walk you through the plan and chime in if there are any legal questions. This is a very straightforward application for a, an older structure that was built in 1910 to be raised and reconstructed on a seven acre lot. The only reason we're before you is because the lot is an isolated lot, no frontage. With that, I will let Greg walk you through the plan. I think you'll find it to be relatively routine.
Thank you for the introduction, Steve. Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer Morse Engineering. This property is a raise and reconstruct of a single-family home located at 215 Tilden Road. We submitted as part of the application, the record plan from the registry 1985 that has a meets and bounds layout of the lot. The lot itself is approximately seven acres in size. It is in the half acre R2 zoning district. And while it has frontage on a paper right of way, it has no physical frontage to a, to a public road. It is accessed off a Tilden Road by a, essentially a gravel driveway that was constructed that does have utilities. The house that's out there, number 215, was constructed in 1910 and is approximately 961 square feet in size. The proposal would be to replace that house with a new house, a single-family home. The size of that home would be 3,800 square feet, which represents a 295% increase. The proposed house location complies with all setbacks to all lot lines. We're not intensifying the non-conformity, which again is the lot frontage.
All right, thank you. So Bob, the, the private way doesn't qualify them here for frontage?
No, well, it doesn't appear to. You'd have to look at the deed and probably be a real estate attorney to see.
We're going to find one of those.
We've got one of those here with a couple of them.
Yeah, I think that might. So this might, I gotta, I gotta look at the deeds, but I, attorney guard.
Yes, the deed doesn't reference the right of way, but it is shown on the 1985 plan. I, I do not have the full title search back, but it's my understanding that this property was in common ownership years ago when it was divided in, I think, 1985. Greg and I kind of vetted that out. So the, we're, we're not claiming any kind of frontage on that right of way. And we thought it was best to defer and treat the lot as non-conforming as to frontage because the right of way is pretty small, you know, it's, it's not, it's certainly not of road grade and width that you would expect to see on a private road. It's like, as Greg mentioned, it's more of a gravel driveway.
Right. Um, you know, I, I, we'll, we'll go through our, I think we'll go, there's no reason not to go through the application here, but to be honest, in looking at this, I, I do see a right of way labeled on a, on a record plan. I think there's a strong argument that this is a conforming lot. Yes, Greg.
The, the definition of frontage, I believe in the zoning by law says that it has to be frontage that's suitable for division in accordance with an 81L division with the planning board. And I, I did not think that the planning board would be comfortable creating a, a form a lot off of this road. I would see that they would have issue with taking frontage off of the right of way as it exists out there today. I, I saw that as deficient as meeting the standard of the zoning by law.
Sounds like someone who's been before the planning board before.
Once or twice.
Yeah. Well, anyway, not to get sidetracked. Does, I don't have any, you know, treating this as a non-conforming lot due to the frontage issue, I, I don't have any questions with respect to the application to, to any of my fellow board members.
I do not.
I'm, I'm hoping I'm not complicating things. I'm sure I'm not. This right of way, is that Persimmon Drive off of Tilden Road, according to Google, which we all things are wise in Google, obviously. I'm, it, it seems to be a rather large, a rather long and substantial paper street running from Tilden at the end of Clover Lane to a structure that appears to be the, the, the applicant property. Any idea?
Hold on.
If you just Google.
I thought I saw the applicant raising his hand.
This is, I don't, yeah. Mr. Connolly, you want to weigh in?
So I, I, we cannot hear you, but it doesn't appear that you're muted.
Yeah, I unmuted you.
Still unable to hear you. I think it might be a microphone issue.
Give me now.
Yes.
I think so.
There you go.
Okay. I've done my own little research on that and I think that Google Maps is wrong on that. I, you know, I can't find any that road or street there. It doesn't look like it to me. It just looks like a small common driveway.
I, 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 I really, you're challenging Google. Oh my, wait, let, let, wait a minute, let's write this down and get it on record. I, I'm, I'm more than familiar with issues with Google Maps in some of these various areas, but it does appear that at least at some point, someone had identified a, a named paper street there. It may be simply a right of way, but they picked it up on record somewhere. It would seem to me that Anthony, I think you may be onto something that this could be considered frontage. But again, I'm going to, in the abundance of caution.
I think that's right.
Isn't that a wonderful word that we use nowadays a lot? Abundance of caution, I'm going to take Mr. Morse and Mr. Guard is attorney garden and engineer Morse in their wisdom and suggest that we have a finding in the abundance of caution.
Yes.
If, if I could, I did not see that right of way labeled with the name Persimmon Drive on any of the survey research that I've performed in the past. Number one. Number two, Persimmon Drive is actually a subdivision in Situate. It's a little bit further up Tilden Road. If you go past the Wampe Tuck Elementary School, it's almost diagonally across the street. There is a subdivision that has approximately 10 homes. I believe it was referred to as Cushing Estates when it was built. It has Hickory Lane in it as well. So you will see that on the Google map, that there is another Persimmon Drive. It's approximately 1,000 feet up Tilden Road to the north, if you look on the, the Google map. I have not seen again, any references that this is Persimmon Drive. The Persimmon Drive I'm aware of is up the street.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like our, our paper street might be west of that, but anyway, moving on from there, we have any members of the public that wish to be heard on the application? I do not see anyone raising any form of hand. So do you see Mr. Leach, we have a picture of sushi. Lovely. All right, with that, do we have a motion? I'm trying to find my.
I imagine we're just looking for a finding here. Cause I don't, I don't see a, a special permit, but move that the board grant the necessary relief for a special permit or finding associated with the raise and reconstruction of the property at 215 Tilden Road in accordance with a plan by Morse Engineering entitled 215 Tilden Road, assessors parcel 392725F, Situate, Massachusetts, dated 121620 and and identify that there are no non-conformities associated with this project.
Sushi there.
See, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
I think that's Mr. Leach.
My name is Richard Leach and I own the adjoining property.
Yes, Mr. Leach, the address of that property, please?
213 and 213 Rear Tilden Road.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my question is, how many stories will this new house be?
Two and a half.
And how far setback from the property will it be? From the property line?
So the.
Back to that significantly more than eight feet. It is proposed to be 875 feet from the rear, 60, almost 69 feet from the front and 51 and a half feet from the side lot line.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very welcome. With that, unless we have anyone else from the public, do we have a second on Ed's motion?
A second.
This is Anthony Buchanan, aye.
Tibbetts, aye.
George, six, aye.
Harrison, aye.
All right, attorney guard, could we impose upon you to submit a decision?
As always.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Thank you.
Want to do mine?
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Greg, are you sticking with us?
I'm sticking.
All right.
I did listen to the whole thing. It was fascinating.
He's, he's, he's been on a roll like this before. With that, we're going to move to our sixth application, that of John Eisen of Saratoga, California, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL chapter 48, section six and or sections eight, 10.2 and 950.2D of the Situate zoning by law to allow the construction of a dimensionally conforming building accessory two and thereby alter, extend, or structurally change a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at 38 Revere Street in Situate. And that such accessory building will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All right.
Well spoken.
Attorney DeLeese, do I have you to thank for the drafting of that mouthful?
I'm sorry about that, really.
That's okay. Almost, you almost hung me up. If you could tell us, if you were Greg, could please tell us a little bit about the project?
I, 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 I think I'm going to let Greg, I think I'm going to let Greg stay on his role. I just wanted to, to jump and say that it's, it's a proposed to be a detached structure, a garage that would be fully dimensionally conforming with the bylaw on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And, and it would have a second floor, which would be an office and kind of workout area for my clients, which is something that I think a lot of people are finding the need for in this COVID-related world that we live in. So I'll let Greg walk you through the plan.
For the record, Greg Morse, Registered Engineer. The property located 38 Revere Street. This is in the R3 zoning district. It's also in the floodplain overlay district. The lot itself is approximately 7,500 square feet. It is in a FEMA zone AE13. It's developed with an existing home. The proposal here is to construct, as Attorney DeLeese just said, a detached structure. It's 26 by 32 feet. The first floor would be used as garage space. The second floor would be office and a, a home gym. The proposal would to access that second structure or locate that str- second structure along Post Script Lane. We have it proposed at 29 feet from Post Script Lane. 28.5 feet is the minimum setback there using the average front yard setbacks. The side yard setbacks proposed are 15 feet and nine feet, both in compliance again with the zoning by law. The house on the property as it sits is 1,129 square feet in size. With this proposed structure going in, the gross floor area goes to 1861. It represents a 65% increase in floor area. I turn it over to you.
Just one thing on that, Greg, before we turn it over to the board, I think that you misspoke. My view of the Situate map is that we're not in the floodplain. We're not requesting a special permit.
Yes, we're, so I, I probably did misspeak. We're not in the Situate floodplain. We are in a FEMA floodplain at elevation 13. However, the, the structure is elevated on wood piles. It is FEMA compliant.
Yeah.
But it's not in the Situate floodplain.
Yep.
And so mainly from my education, it, it looks as though the proposed structure is encroaching onto the leaching field. That's allowed because of the piles?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so single-story structure adding what looks like 630 feet, 700, 630 feet?
No, two-story structure, first story garage, second story, the, the 800 and some odd square feet.
Bathroom? But the first, the first story Jeff is under the, first story Jeff is under the building, if it's on piles, right? I'm going to park under the building the way I would park under a home that had been elevated on pilings.
So sort of a tomato, tomato issue, Jeff. I, I think I understand what you're saying. It'll, it'll probably have the, the blow through walls like, like we see are required. But essentially the cars will be parking enclosed on the ground, if I'm describing that correctly?
It will be a two, it will be a, a two-car enclosed garage. There will be a very, very short ramp to get to the area where, where the cars park. But it, it will be elevated on a couple of feet of pilings, but it'll be low enough such that the cars can pull into the garage. Then there would, then there would be a room above. And there would be a bathroom, no shower, just a half bath, no kitchen, no bedroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here we go. Good clarification. That does it for me. Susan or Ed?
I'll, I'll, I'll weigh in. Why not a shower? It's a, it's a beach area. They could easily, I mean, I, I can, I can argue that there shouldn't be a kitchen because we, we don't want to be creating an accessory dwelling situation here. But I wouldn't want this board to be making a decision as to whether there's a shower. I don't think that's, I think the bathroom, shower, you know, toilet, perfectly acceptable. No kitchen, I, I, they're not asking for an accessory dwelling, so I would like to make it clear that that's not on the plate, but. Make it clear that that's not on the plate, but other than that, appropriate accommodations for. A gym area or office, I would be in favor of.
Thanks for that, Ed. We appreciate that.
Okay, but mainly that's just encouraging showering after working out. I would tend to agree.
It certainly makes sense to me. It's just, yeah.
It's a pub, public good issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, my concern in all these situations is scope creep, right? So, and we have a full bath and then, oh, well, what else did we put in and what other, so, you know, I just wanted to know. We'll call it a bathroom.
Um, with that, Bob, anything we missed?
Don't think so.
Okay. If we have anyone from the public with any questions or comments on the application. Please raise your hand, real or virtual. Down to a pretty small group here. It doesn't look like there are any comments. With that, I will make a motion that the board find.
Was looking to raise our hand. Yes, that is correct.
Please go ahead. I just, your, your full name and address for the record.
It is Michael and Gene Huey. We're on 34 Revere Street. And our property runs to Post Script and is referred to as 33 Post Script. Can I ask for some more description of the setbacks? Of the, this is basically a standalone garage. But as I was reading the filing here, it sounded like it was being attached.
No.
The existing structure. Is that incorrect? It's totally standalone.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and what are the setbacks again from? Thank you.
You're welcome. The setbacks quickly would be 15 feet from the property line closest to your home. Nine feet from the property line on the water side. And 29 feet from Post Script Lane. With an average allowed setback of 28.5, I believe.
What's the elevation? Of the peak?
I, I believe it's around 25 feet. You're, you're talking height.
Height.
To the peak of the house is approximately, to the peak of the structure. Is approximately 25 feet from the finished grade.
From existing grade.
That's my understanding, but it would certainly be less than the maximum allowable.
And the footprint again is 26 by 32.
Greg, is that the footprint? That, that looks about right, but I don't know if I have that.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Huey, did you have anything else?
No, just digesting the information, I would have to say initially we'd be opposed to this.
Okay.
If it was attached to the existing house. I would not be, but you're basically adding a whole new structure. In the middle of a non-conforming lot. A fairly good-sized structure.
I think that's, that's an accurate statement. Traditionally. When that structure occurs within the envelope and a, a good-sized structure, but a. Somewhat modest one, I, you know, it's a, that's serving a dual purpose as a garage. It, it is consistent with something that we've allowed throughout the town in the past, is, is what I would say there. But your, your objection is noted.
I'll also note for you that the majority of the homes on that street on Post Script. Or Revere, those lots run from Revere back to Post Script. The legal descriptions always Revere. Most of those homes are that type of dimension, 26 by, 28 by 30. 26 by 30, so you're basically putting this. Similar-sized structure that's comparable to the existing homes on that street. That's what you're allowing.
So I just, I'll just jump in on this briefly, is as I look at. As I look at the Mass GIS maps, I'm able to see structures relative to lot lines. One, two, the three abutting properties to this property. All have detached structures. And then, and then one of the structures on the opposite side of one of the abutters does as well.
Right, and they've been existing since the 1940s.
So, just pointing out a fact as to what the neighborhood looks like.
I think it's also appropriate to note that the applicant or an applicant with a parcel. Like this could come to us with a raise and reconstruct on the existing structure, the existing dwelling. And increase the size of the dwelling with a attached garage. I think the detached garage, not increasing dwelling space. Is a. You know, kind of limits them in the future, and it's a less impactful proposal. Than adding to the existing dwelling.
I, I would agree. There's a, there are denser proposals available on this lot here that the. That the board would likely be hard-pressed to deny. I, I don't see this as a terribly dense application. Okay, thank you, Mr. Huey. If anyone else has anything to add from the public? Doesn't look like we do, and with that, I will make a motion on the application of John Eisen. For the property at 38 Revere Street in Situate. That the board find that the proposed detached structure, as shown on a plan by Morse Engineering. Dated 12/7/2020. Does not create any new nonconformities, and that to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities. That such intensifications will not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor, Anthony Buchanan, aye.
Tibbetts, aye.
George seeks aye.
Harrison, aye.
The ayes have it. Attorney DeLeese, would you be able to handle that write-up for us?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to briefly welcome Susan and George to the board. I, I was, I missed the last meeting, so I'm happy to do that. I'll, I'll, I'll get that out to you within the week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
You too, Jeff, how's?
Oh, you heard about my puppy?
My sons and Jeff's sons are in the, in the same grade at Cushing Elementary. And, and a new puppy is about as big as news gets right now.
What kind of puppy?
I think he probably peed in the house three times since, since I've been on this call.
Yeah.
Yeah, a, a black lab and.
Ah, perfect.
He's like a little stuffed animal at the moment. And it's great to have him.
Right at the end of the tunnel. Our, our puppy is five months old and, and is using the bathroom outside.
Wow, that's.
Felt like it would never happen.
It's causing a great stress within the house, so I can't wait for that to occur.
Yeah. Watch out for the salt marshals from our first application. There is hope, there is hope. They made me get, get a COVID puppy too, and I survived it, so.
There you go. Hey, that's three people on this call. That's amazing. Anyway, thanks for asking. Everybody have a great night.
Janine, do we have, we have some minutes to vote on?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I believe it's.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I can't recall the months. I believe it's April, May, and July.
I think that sounds right. I, I should have pulled up the email before I asked you.
Which were months that did not. You, you weren't, you didn't have a meeting. It was just basically due to the COVID issue.
Then it sounds like the minutes should be pretty easy to approve. I, I do remember looking at them.
And I think August was the other month.
Minutes if you don't have a meeting?
One sentence saying that.
Oh, that we didn't have a meeting, okay.
I can approve that.
I didn't, I can't, cause I wasn't on the board.
Janine, I'm not sure, just, just for reference, I'm not sure I'm getting my emails. And we can, maybe you could send me an email tomorrow just as a test, you know, are you getting this? Because. I think, I, I, I think you, based on the conversation this evening, some things have been referenced that I don't think I saw.
I apologize for that, I, I.
No problem. I, I don't want to give out my email on the Situate television, but. Although it's, it's in the website, you're welcome to, people are welcome to go find it. It's in the website, but.
And so, Janine, I, George, when did you join the board? Was it, were you on in April?
Yeah, something like that.
I think, so, and, and Janine, you know, I'm gonna, I don't think I have this power, but by the power vested in me, I, I'm gonna move that. We don't need to vote on minutes that are just put forth for the purpose of. Stating that we voted to postpone the meeting because we didn't have an application. I, I like that we are putting those in the record. Which is nice, but since we did vote to postpone those meetings, I, I. I'm going, as a chairman, I'm gonna vote that those, those minutes be approved.
And then the, the August minutes, I looked okay to me. I mean, they looked appropriate.
Thank you.
Yes, and so I guess a motion to approve the August minutes, I think George, Ed and I can do that.
Right.
Great.
So, do, do we have a second?
Second.
Well, it's Anthony Buchanan, aye on the approval of the August minutes.
Tibbetts, aye.
The exercise.
Go, so approved. With that, unless anyone has anything else, Ed, you missed at the beginning there. So Moreland Road continued. I, I think you saw that.
I was here.
And I, I mentioned to the board, they actually had a, I got a call from the engineer. And he had Mr. Leggy on the phone with him. And they wanted to ask me some questions, and the questions really, it, it was almost a carbon copy of our last hearing. They wanted to understand what the board was looking for. I reiterated that we were looking for a further explanation. As to the medical need for the size and shape of pool that they were proposing. The board had felt in the last hearing that there was a little bit of a disconnect there. The, Mr. Leggy disagreed with our need to know that. I, I, you know, that it is what it is. That's what we requested. He said they were gonna try to get us that information.
It's, we simply need a compelling reason to, you know, find that the bylaw can be circumvented. I mean, or not circumvented, but relieved.
And that's what I, I explained. It was sort of a, a help me, help you scenario, and. So I, they, they indicated they were gonna try to get that for us, and, and hopefully. If they continue the application further, hopefully they come back with something. But that was it. There really wasn't any substance or new information on the call at all. If there was, I would have updated the board more immediately, but it was. Honestly, just a, a reiteration of. Of our last hearing.
Can I do a public service announcement?
Of course.
Just that this is a wonderful board, and I, I, I love serving on it. But none of us can be here forever, and it's a great opportunity for the public. If you're, if you've enjoyed watching. And you want to get involved, send a letter to the Board of Selectmen and ask to be for their appointment. We've got, it's a talented group of people. We have wonderful things to, to address. We do it thoughtfully, considerately, and not all of us can be here forever, right, Anthony?
That's right. Sorry, I'm, I'm getting old for this stuff, too old for this stuff.
So, I'm sure the selection would love to have some applicants.
That's right. I would too. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Or George's second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We can batch that one in. So, we, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and thank you for the help with the Zoom.
Thank you, Seth.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Appreciate it. Take care.
And Janine, if you missed anything, you're already live on Facebook. You can watch it.